Good afternoon. I guess I gotta get it a little closer. Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton. I gotta bring the mic a little closer. There we go. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon's work session, voting session, is for Bill 21-0113. In attendance today, we have John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mark Conway of the Fourth District is here. He just stepped away for a second. Ryan Dorsey of the Third District. Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District. Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And everyone is here today. I'm just checking, no other council members. And also, he stepped away, not a member of the committee, but Councilman Costello, Eric Costello of the Eleventh District is here. And also, from the President's Office, I see Nikki Thompson on line and...
Thank you, Madam Chair. And General Counsel DeGraffin Reed is coming shortly to the chambers. We had a meeting run over prior to this, so our apologies.
Thank you, Nikki. And from the Office of the Mayor's Staff, I see Sophia G.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's begin with Bill Number 21-0113, zoning modifications. For the purpose of making needed changes to certain provisions that during the course of actively operating under the new zoning code were discovered to be functionally impractical and otherwise in need of modification to abate previously unanticipated consequences and generally relating to the zoning and land use laws of the City of Baltimore. This bill is sponsored by the Council President for the Administration, specifically the Department of Planning. This bill was introduced on August 16th, 2021. And then approximately seven months later, we had the public hearing, which was held on March 1st. And then that hearing was recessed. And then we started our several work sessions, which were held on May 10th, May 24th, July 26th, and September 13th, all of on, in the year of 2022. And for the committee, just a reminder, the next work session is scheduled for October 25th. Same time, same place. There are some bills for the committee. If you open up your packet, I kinda went through with some items that I feel, I know we really wanna spend some more time with. So if you wanna mark those, we're gonna hold those amendments until then. And I'll go by the items. So the first one, does every committee member have a packet? Okay. Councilman Dorsey? Oh, if you can give those to Jennifer. So item number, item four, transition rules. For 2-203, we're gonna hold, definitely hold that. And item number five, I think that's discretion to deny the BMZA variance applications for 5-310. We're also gonna hold 12 through 13. That's the outdoor dining and prohibit deck and rooftop dining. We're gonna hold those till the next session. Also, 19 through 24, that's the bike parking amendments. And we're also gonna hold 25 through 28, and that's the amendments for sign regulations. And as we go along, there might be some more that we need further discussion with as we move along.
Madam Chair, do you mind repeating, before 25 to 28, what was the other item?
19 to 24, and then 25 to 28. And then as we go along, there might be some more that we'll just hold until the next session. The committee reviewed the bill itself. So remember, we have a bill and our packet of amendments. Several amendments are being suggested. Today, we will review proposed amendments. The amendment packet was distributed to the committee members. Planning and other agencies have done a great job working with council members. And I also wanna give a shout out to Jennifer Coats that has really been phenomenal with helping and working with myself and Tamara Woods of Planning. And she put together this for the committee to help follow. And we all just wanna thank you. Let's, I just wanna take a moment and just give you a round of applause. As we review the proposed amendments, let's continue to be mindful that many of the zoning changes, farmers' markets, parking lots, carriage houses, and fuel stations may have a citywide impact on businesses and property owners. We want to attract and enhance development and business opportunities, as well as create better neighborhoods, housing, and efficient and accessible transportation systems. We must consider the citywide impact on our decisions. As we move forward, let's keep these things in mind. I have, there were some, I guess, outside entities that had, have amendments. And I, as we've been going through our work sessions, I wanna continue to say that you always have an opportunity to submit written testimony and amendments. We don't distribute our packet of amendments until they have been finalized. We don't want to, you know, distribute ideas. What we have now in front of us are ideas until we vote on them. So we avoid distributing them right at this point. So today, we will start to review amendments. And I also, I think I wanna start with Hillary. If there, I wanna point out that the bill addresses certain changes. And Hillary, Hillary Ruley may want to speak on that. I don't know if you have anything you wanna add before we, we kinda move on.
For the, just in general, or?
Yeah, in general, yes.
No, I think, I mean, I can pop in if, if needed.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay. So Councilman, I know there's been a couple of council people that have submitted amendments. I think we wanna go on record to say that you, there was one that you submitted, Councilman Dorsey. I wanna go on record that you submitted an amendment for...
Yes.
Just kinda mention the, right now, the title and what you submitted.
In the packet here is a page that has two amendments on it, on it, from me. There should be three amendments on it. And I sent that corrected copy with three amendments.
Just now?
Just now via email to all of the committee members and staff. And that third amendment is the one that we discussed in the last hearing as a table amendment for building height for C1 and C2 properties, changing the maximum height from 60 to 68. I think that between the back and forth, between DLR and myself, we just, I guess, neglected to send it to Jennifer.
So DLR hasn't produced it yet, correct?
No, they have. It is drafted, it is...
Is that the one you just?
That's the one I just sent.
Do you have, do you have another copy?
I just sent it by email.
Oh, by email, okay.
By email.
We'll make sure that's included.
And Madam Chair, I submitted a correction to mine that I think we have to hand out to everybody. But I found an error in, in one of them, so...
Okay. Alrighty.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to go print it if that makes it easier for folks. I just don't have any staff here in City Hall at the moment to print it for me. I'd have to leave the chambers to go print it myself.
We'll go ahead and just kinda start and move that along. If we get to that, we're gonna have another session of voting, so we can do it then, or, you know, as we move along. Oh, Councilman Conway, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note that I do have an amendment as well, and I'll make sure to get this out to everybody by email right now. And the long and short of it is it, it keeps everything standard as it was before regarding changes that went from conditional by ordinance to conditional by board. We're just gonna keep it that way, is what I'm proposing. That we would, can keep it as conditional by ordinance.
Okay, what item was that with?
I'll send that by email right now. It's gonna be tied to 2-203, transition rules.
Okay, 'cause we're gonna, it might be something we'll hold till the next one, 'cause we're gonna need the title and the item and the, just to keep in the format with everything. Okay. Anyone else before we start? Okay, and then we're, I want you to bear with me because I have a sheet for every single amendment. That we're gonna do the page lumber, the line, just go through everything. So we are gonna go ahead and start with the first one, the first item, which is a technical amendment. And this is with the Planning Department. So Tamara, if you wanna go over that amendment and kinda talk about it again, and then we'll go ahead and take a vote on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning.
Oh, you know what? This first, this first one, it's numbering. So I think that we're gonna go ahead and skip that because that will probably, you agree? That will probably change as we go along with the numbering.
Yes.
Specifically numbering.
That's just the purpose clause in the beginning.
Let's go ahead with number two.
Okay, so...
Item two for the committee.
Item two for the committee. And let me, just bear with me because I know we're adding a bunch of different things in here. Page seven. So this, this particular amendment was brought up in the exempt utility section. And so this goes, is a companion. And we're gonna get to Councilman Dorsey's amendment, which is number three, where we had a lot of discussion about the exemption of, on public property. And it was felt that that was really too broad of an exemption. Like, why would we exempt ourselves from really anything related to structures? And so what we did is we had a meeting with Councilman Dorsey to discuss it and what we agree. And can I, is it okay if I take two and three together since they're a pair? Are you okay with that?
You, you wanna basically discuss them together?
Yes.
Can't vote on them together, they have to be individual?
Yes, but it's probably easier for me to discuss them together?
Go ahead.
Okay, let me go to 2-202. So right now, on, in the bill, let me find it. I've got a lot of pages here, a lot of papers, too. Okay, so on page seven of the bill, on line 26, that's where we have located the words "or on public property." And that's the language that was felt to be entirely too broad. So in our meeting, our discussion with Law Department and with City Council, we agreed that that was actually too broad. So we would support number three, Councilman Dorsey's amendment to strike that language. And number two is the amendment that we're discussing now is actually the language that we would have included instead, which says, is adding a number 11, a new number 11 that says, "Any installation, structure, equipment, or accessory that is used by a government entity for internet or telecommunications and located on public property." So that is really just a modified version of what we were trying to get to in our original amendment.
Okay. We're gonna, because we're just getting this today, we're gonna hold this to vote on at the next session. I wanna move to, I think a good one to vote on today would be item, this is for the committee, item eight. The topic, conditional use approval standards, which is mainly language approval. Pages 17 and 18 of item eight.
So item eight is conditional use standards, pages 17, lines 10 through 33, and page 18, lines 1 through 11. So what we're proposing in this particular bill is to change the title of, that you see required considerations and actually change that title to evaluation criteria. And then we're going to, at least we're proposing to swap the, the actual section. So what is in the bill listed as B becomes the new evaluation criteria, but it is relettered as A. And then what we have in the bill as A actually becomes the new B. So it, that's the proposal for number eight.
Do I have a motion to move? Moved by Glover, second.
Second.
Second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Glover? Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes? Is a yes. Okay, our First Amendment. Yes. Bear with me, 'cause I got a sheet for every amendment.
Her amendment, uh...
Councilwoman Ramos?
I answered my own question.
Oh, okay. We're gonna be, you know, kinda skipping around. So I also think that item 10 is, is technical on the fuel and gas stations. 10 and 11, Tamara, could you kind of briefly explain those?
Sure. So 10 and 11, these are in the use sections, change the title in gas station reference to fuel station. So this is part of a suite of amendments that basically you'll see several of them throughout the code where we are just acknowledging that gas stations are, you know, like, we call them gas stations, but they can be more than just gas. So we're proposing to change the reference to fuel station.
Okay.
So that's the amendments that we're proposing.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention to the, remind the committee that I actually have issues with this, but it's gonna end up being an entirely new bill. So, 'cause it doesn't make sense to me, actually, to put fuel stations with gas stations. But we have to, like, change a lot of stuff in the bill. So we had agreed with the Planning Department that we would do something separate. We would go ahead and vote this as it is with their amendments. And then I'll come back with a more full bill. And I believe the Councilman is working with me on that, so...
Okay.
Just a, just a note for the committee.
I remember that discussion, and I have some notes here, too, where the committee discussed the, the use of the term "gas," which covers many substances. Language used in the bill is meant to be inclusive. The term "fuel" is a more expansive term. There needs to be a policy discussed about the topic with the Planning Department, Transportation, and Law Department.
Mostly around like, mostly around like EVs, right?
Right, right.
So different, so that is gonna be a whole different thing. But just a note to the committee to remind you.
Gotcha. Do I have a motion to move this amendment?
Which ones are we doing, I'm sorry?
The number... Number 10, item 10.
Planning Amendment Number 7.
Where'd it go? It's, yeah, I see it, uh-huh. Page six, item 10.
But on the list of amendments, this is listed as Planning Amendment Number 7.
Correct.
I think there's two fuel station, item 10 and 11. Number 11 is listed as Planning Amendment Number 7.
There, there'll be several of them throughout the entire bill.
Right, right now, I'm focused on item, item 10, page six, is the one that...
Right, but it's Amendment Number 7 in the packet. Yeah, that's what it says on the chart, yeah.
On your list, it's item 10.
Oh, it's item 10?
Page three of our amendment table, right.
That's on the actual amendment table, is what you're talking. Number seven.
So both 10 and 11 are amendment number 7.
10 and 11 are separate amendments.
Correct.
10 and 11 are, there's item 10 and our item 11, correct?
It seems that you've, on 10, listed them as combined a little bit. I'm not sure why they're separated, but they both go to the same use station, use table. So they're both pointing to 14, 314, on page three of our amendments, which is the Amendment Number 7. So Legislative Reference has them, to Councilman Dorsey's point, as Amendment Number 7. But on the table, you have them listed separately.
Okay, let's go with Amendment Number 7. Is there a motion to move? Do I have a motion? Bullock's, and second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
And Stokes? Amendment Number 7.
Okay, and then for 10, if you're keeping track on your chart, 10 also references the table amendments that will come. So I think that's where probably some of the confusion is. It, 10 just combines several of them that will be seen separately in the Legislative Reference draft.
Okay, so if we vote on number 10, is that...
You're voting on the tables as well.
Okay. Number 10 is tables as well. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Bullock, second. Second by Conway. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
This is on the table, the correspondence amendment that we just had, yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
Stokes? Okay, let's see what we wanna do next. Okay, page seven. Item 15. Definition of the carriage houses, the carriage house. You wanna talk about that first? 'Cause I think that had to deal with reduction of size, so on.
The main change there in my amendments was to not require a parking space for the carriage houses.
Tamara, do we have a clear definition of what a carriage house is?
I can, let me look real quickly. It'll take me a minute to get through, it's the very beginning. Do you have one, Hillary? You can search really quickly.
I'm sorry, I can't yet.
It's my amendment, too, on my, uh-huh.
Page seven, item 15.
Carriage house means an accessory structure of two-story construction that was formerly used or intended to be used for the storage of horses and carriages.
Does anyone in the committee have any questions? Because they, it is talking about reducing the size. Any questions? Do I have a motion to move?
So...
Second.
Was that Dorsey? Okay, and then Ramos. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Glover? Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, let's do item 17. Parking exemption for historic structure.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible we could stick on this subject of carriage houses for a moment to deal with my amendment that also applies to carriage houses?
I wanna move to 17.
Okay.
Parking exemption for historic structures. We do have another work session, reminder.
Okay, let me, hold on one second.
17, the parking exemption.
Sure.
First, Hillary, did you have a question about that one?
I don't think so.
Exemption and exception is... Exemption and exception is in my notes.
Madam Chair, an exemption would be, it doesn't, the rule doesn't apply to it at all. An exception would be the rule applies, but it's going to be not utilized in a particular situation. So, that'd be the difference, but...
Marguerite? Could you turn to page 27 and put that on the screen? And we have Marguerite Curry, which is also helping Jennifer today in Council Services.
Sure.
Can you explain, Tamara, could you explain this?
Sure.
Know what's going on?
Sure. On page 27 of the bill, this is the section that deals with structures over 50 years old in the required off-street parking. In this particular section, the Planning Department included an amendment for exceptions that says the parking exemption described in paragraph 1 of the subsection does not apply if you meet the two criteria. Any variance from the provisions of the code or the premises part of an application. So, when we met with various members of the community and, you know, just I think even in committee, this entire kind of number 2, the exceptions, was a little bit unclear. And what we talked about was the process. It wasn't clear what the process was. Most people didn't even know what the process was. If you knew, you knew. Like, you had to be in the know in order to take advantage, was kind of the basis of it. So, what we did instead in our amendments is say, let's get rid of number 2 altogether. There's no need to really have it. But instead, what we wanted to do is do a clarity on the permitting process. So, what we're saying is add in a new number 2, which is what you see in your table on 17, that says if an exemption is granted by the Director of Planning, a parking variance is not required in evidence of an approved exemption submitted with the permit application. So, it's saying if the Director approves your exemption, then you show this proof that he's approved it. And then we added in another. If the exemption is denied by the Director of Planning, a variance may be requested and approved by BMZA. So, instead of giving criteria for an exception, we just, which was confusing, we said either you get it and you have evidence of it, or you can still go to BMZA, which is what people were doing anyway. If you knew to go to BMZA, you would just go to BMZA. So, that was what we are proposing.
So, you're taking away the word "exception" and putting "exemption"?
We're taking away lines 20 through 25 altogether and replacing it with the new text. The new permitting section, which you see in the table, in Jennifer's table.
Any questions from the committee? For Tamara on this, before we take a vote?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to go ahead and move this? Or you still need time to look at it?
So moved. Planning Amendment Number 14.
Page 27 in the bill. Did I hear someone say so moved?
This is Planning Amendment Number 14. I move the amendment favorable.
Okay, moved by Dorsey. Is there a second?
Second.
And it was second by Ramos. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover? Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes is a yes. Oh, sorry. Yes, for Stokes. Okay, moving on. Looking for some more quick, technical ones that we have right in front of us. Let's try item 29. Determination of nonconformity. Page 51 of the bill. Lines 14 to 25.
Are we doing line 7 through 10? You want to do the 29 or 30?
7 through 10.
Okay, so we're looking at number 29, determination of nonconformity, which is on page 51 of the bill, 18-206. Planning Department is recommending that that entire section be removed. And what you'll see, we're saying 7 through 10. And in the Legislative Reference draft, it will say 6 through 10, because we're removing the title as well. We don't need it at all, and so we just recommend removing it.
So, the committee, they're recommending deleting it. So, do I have a motion to move?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes, it sounds like this needs to be altered to say line 6 through 10. Is that correct?
And I believe in the Legislative Reference draft, it might.
Okay, I got you. Okay, it's the spreadsheet that is not in...
The amendment is correct.
Okay.
So, it's 6 through 10, and the amendment, it is correct.
Great. I move Amendment Number 18 from the Planning Department.
Second.
Moved by Dorsey, second by Ramos, Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway? Yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover? Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
29, okay. Okay, let's talk about the next one right under that.
Okay.
Expiration of approval.
Okay, so this came from a conversation, I think it was at our last work session, that continued talking about nonconformities. And there was a lot of great conversation regarding, from Councilman Dorsey and Councilwoman Ramos, to really try to clarify that particular piece and what was it trying to do and what could it do. So, what we worked out with them, and we did have a meeting, you know, a limping meeting. Unfortunately, we were not able to come to any conclusion for the issue for Councilwoman Ramos, but we have agreed that that would be something we would have future conversations, you know, on and may come through separate legislation. But we did, however, come to some conclusions for the issues that Councilman Dorsey had, which was regarding an R3-zone property that as far back as the 1930s was a multifamily six-unit building. So, when you look at 18-207 and the language that we have in there, what we came up with is there could be the expiration of approval, as we have. But we would want to add in a provision to reestablish some lapsed, you know, approvals. So, that would basically allow for the reoccupation or reuse of the particular multifamily building. So, what we're proposing, and in caps, I believe that's what you have in your spreadsheet from Jennifer. She copied in the text. So, we would keep the language that's in the small text is what's in the bill. So, we would add, reestablish or, so we'll read, any authorization to reestablish or continue a nonconforming use density or other nonconformity lapses and becomes void for one year. So, most of that's already in the bill. 1 through 3 is already what's in the bill. So, you would need the use permit under the code, the erection or alteration of the structure, and the use has lawfully begun. So, those are the three things that you have to have in order to not have your approval lapse. B is the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may grant an extension of this period. And then we added in, in this particular amendment outlined in A, by not more than 18 months. So, you can get, because we're talking about structures at this point, you're needing time for construction. So, you can buy not more than 18 months on written application or for good cause, shown without notice of hearing. And I believe that is all for 30.
Any questions to Tamara from the committee? Councilmember Conway?
Just for clarification, is it not more than 18 months from the original expiration? Or 18 months from this sort of reestablishment period?
So, the way we were writing it is that you would get an additional 18 months. But I think we're open to whatever the council would prefer. And I can defer to Councilman Dorsey, because it is, you know, we're talking about construction and, you know, that's a little bit different than just a use permit.
Because there's questions about it, we're gonna, we're gonna hold this one.
Madam Chair, I can give a response.
Councilman Dorsey, you can, you want to explain?
The idea here is that if you got a building, a good example is the one that Tamara gave. You have a building that was built in the 1930s, very clearly as six dwelling units. And it makes no financial sense, there's no financial feasibility of converting six units into a single unit in a building that was not constructed for that purpose. There's no feasible way to utilize that building any other way than the way it was constructed. But because it has been vacant for a year, a couple of years, the current law does not allow for that building to be reoccupied because it was rezoned R3, which prohibits multi-dwelling. So, this is allowing for the reestablishment of the use that it always only ever had, but recognizes that this building has been vacant for a while, and there may be others like this, a building has been vacant for a while. It's going to take however long it takes before somebody newly acquires that property and seeks to start their work to bring it back into use. And so, it is from the point when they apply for that use permit to start that work that they get one year to finish that work and put it into its use. However, this section B says, but essentially, if that work takes a little bit longer, the BMZA can approve an additional up to 18 months for them to get that work done.
Okay. Go ahead. Conway?
I'm good with that explanation, Madam Chair. I think that makes, at least to me, unless someone else disagrees, it clear that this is the BMZA's ability to grant an additional 18 months. So, this is from the moment that BMZA decides to grant it is 18 months.
And it's typical right now, they can grant a year. So, we're saying the additional 18, just because it is construction-related.
It could take longer. Yep.
They don't have to grant 18. They could do up to 18.
Up to, correct.
So, and 30 and 31 are kind of together, related, correct?
Yes. So, Ree, you want me to go ahead and talk about 31? And are you gonna, you're gonna hold 30?
Talk about 31.
Sure, so...
If we need more time.
Okay, so 30, 31 is the reason you're seeing the, in 30, the words "reestablished". So, what we have now in 18-306 is a direct prohibition for reversion, which means you can't resurrect a dead, you know, nonconforming use. So, what we're doing is adding an exception, a very limited exception, that says reestablishment of elapsed legal nonconforming multifamily dwelling use in R1A through R4. In the R1A through R4 residential zoning districts, the zoning administrator may authorize reestablishment of a residential nonconforming multifamily use that has lapsed up to the same number of units, less than the number, up to the same number, or a number less than the number of units that were legally established, if, and these ifs are important, was a legally established multifamily dwelling unit and the structure was not altered to become a single-family dwelling unit. So, if you made it into a single-family unit, you don't get this provision at all, because you've already said, we're taking it back down to a single-family house. But in the case where we have vacant, you know, properties, such as the one that you've spoken about in R3, it's set vacant for probably at least a decade as a six-dwelling unit building. So, this would actually give the ability to resurrect. And part of the issue that we have is, in the previous zoning code, in R2 and R4, you could actually have multifamily. In the new zoning code, you cannot have multifamily. So, we made a slew of nonconforming uses and properties just by that mere change alone. So, some have continued, which is fine. We have provisions if you're continued legal. But we do not have provisions if for some reason you've lapsed. So, this would allow that reestablishment.
So, I made note too that Councilman Torrance wants to put in an amendment, and I, and I think we need more time because of this change. So, we're gonna hold 30, 30, 31, and 32. We're gonna hold the vote until then, because there is another amendment coming in.
I think his is slightly different, the way he described it to me, but it's probably good to keep them all in the same, like, the package, because it's all, it's about nonconformity.
But it'll be for Title 18?
I don't think it's gonna be, it's not related to the zoning, to this, as I understand it from him. But it is, has to do with continuance of, of nonconform, or discontinuance of nonconformity.
Okay.
For a certain zoning...
Keep in mind that our, you know, these are, this is for the entire city.
Okay. So, we just look at them as a package?
We talked about it.
We're holding until the next meeting for 30, 31, and 32.
Okay.
Which is all just one amendment.
It's, yeah, Amendment Number 3, yeah.
Okay, moving to another one. So, let's go back up to the top again. Because I think as far as technical, that's about it. So, back on the first page, I see amendment, let's go back to item 1, and there... So, back on the first page, I see amendment, let's go back to item one, and there are, there is an amendment from Councilman Costello, and he stepped away.
That was, that was technical, though, isn't it? Renumber it.
Okay.
Yes, I can talk about his in, in item one, sure. So, he has a proposal for four amendments that you'll see throughout the bill, and so this is basically just adding those into the recitals.
Of course, we're gonna give attention.
So, it's, it's not the actual content of the bill, it's just adding it to the numbering in the general provisions.
Okay, let me see if he's, if he's still, his stuff is still here.
I think he stepped away.
Yes, could you go check? As he's checking, um...
Sorry.
Committee, if you see something else that you, besides the ones that I had already pointed out that I think we should hold, I'm trying to see if there's some other...
Probably discuss the, the parking and the wireless communication in a park, because...
Which, which?
This is item 33 and 34. Planning has amendments and I have amendments.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, page 13 of the chart.
So... You're saying 33, you said?
33 and 34.
Gotcha.
Because the committee has to decide which version one to use, basically.
Um, Councilman Costello, we, I went back to that first one on the first page, it's kinda technical. Did you wanna talk about, talk about that? Tamara did kinda do an explanation.
I think...
Is there something you wanted to add?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm certain that Tamara covered it adequately, and this was, this was part of one of my other amendments that appears later, but I worked hand-in-hand with, with planning, so I'm, I'm good here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's vote on this. Number two, I mean, page two, and it was in the first item, Councilman Costello had a...
Madam Chair.
Oh, we don't? Oh, okay.
Part of the, his other amendment, and then we might have to renumerate everything at the end of the day.
Let's move on to page 1333.
Okay, so this particular one, if you remember on, I can't even remember which page in the bill, but it's table 7202. This was a, I think, a very contentious, you know, item about making parking in the open space zones permitted. And so, what we did prior to hearing at Planning Commission, that we agreed to delete our proposed amendment to make it permitted and leave it as is in the code, which is conditional use by ordinance. And the second one is to remove the footnote for wireless communication services will remain as footnote number one. So, when it became permitted, we added in a footnote about the parking, so when you delete the permitted use, you delete the footnote, and everything goes back to the way it was in the code. So, that's our amendment.
So, mine, in my, in my corrections, which I don't think folks have, this was one of the errors that I found, it wasn't, it basically says the same thing, but took out the, I don't know if we need the P, but it would make it so that its parking lot accessory use in a park would be conditional by ordinance. And then my amendment makes wireless communications conditional by ordinance, not by board.
So, yours, you wanna keep it as conditional by ordinance?
Yeah, for the, for, for the parking, and then, but I'm adding conditional by ordinance for the wireless.
So, so it seems her, your first part is the same as ours, you wanna just keep it as is in the code. But your amendment actually expands on that table to make the, the wireless telecommunications conditional by ordinance instead of conditional by board.
Yeah, that's correct, except the, the amendment number five in the, in the packet is incorrect, so I had submitted an additional one to make that clear.
So, has this been worked out, or do?
Well...
More time to work it out?
I think the committee just needs to decide if we wanna have a wireless, it seems like we agree on conditional by ordinance on the parking lot, just given the discussion from the other day. And then wireless communication services is right now conditional by board, but my amendment would have it conditional by ordinance. It's really up to the committee how you wanna, Madam Chair, I don't know how you wanna handle those.
Discussion with the committee?
The reason to do a conditional by ordinance is, again, to have the council be involved in what takes place on our open spaces.
I think that's a good idea.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah, I'll just note that I've read these both a couple of times, both Councilwoman Ramos's amendment and the planning amendment, and insofar as the changes, which appear to be identical, that each would make to line 17, the text of both is much more complicated than what needs to be in here, because the amendment could simply say, "Strike line 17 from the bill."
So, that's the, that's the correction that had to be made in mine, because mine does say, "Strike 17 from the bill."
Yeah, if, if either of these, if either of these amendments said just...
Marguerite, could you turn to page 52? In the bill?
Who?
It's Marguerite.
She's online. She's the one that's...
Magic, she's magic.
She's helping.
She's just moving this.
Yeah, yeah, she's magic. All right, let me get to...
See, the, the bill is proposing to change what is existing as conditional to permit it, conditional by ordinance to permit it, no?
No, it's opposite. It's, so our bill proposes it become permitted, the amendment is actually to keep it as is. So, she's saying, and we're saying, to remove the brackets.
The bill shows that the current condition is conditional by ordinance, and that you are seeking to strike that and replace it with permitted.
That's the bill.
Yes, and so, the amendment would be to say, "No, actually, let's not do that, and let's leave it that way."
Correct.
And that can be expressed very simply by saying, "Strike line 17 from the bill."
Yes, that's fine, either, either way, I mean, however...
That is the simple...
Is that what your amendment is saying?
No, so, what, what it's, oh, uh-huh.
Right, like, whichever, I mean, I think we're, we're agreeing that we want it to stay as is in the code, so...
The concept is whether or not we want parking on our parks.
On this line, strike...
Well, we're agreeing that it would just be conditional by use, it's staying the way it is in the zoning code. So, that, so what Councilman Dorsey is saying is because that's the only change, we don't actually need all the extra language, that's all he's saying.
Well, then, mine was written correctly, because I thought it said that it was gonna take it out completely.
Yeah, it's, it's all the same. I think the, the only question is the last part, is the wireless communication services. You know, so, I mean, we can accept your language if the committee agrees with the second part, if the committee does not agree with the second part of her amendment, then we go with planning's.
Do we, do we need a rewrite?
We would need to reconcile the two, but wanted to, I guess, get the, the feeling of the committee.
So, let me, just to kinda go back and, and...
And we might wanna hear from agencies like Recreation and Parks.
So, I think they would want to keep, I mean, I know for sure of at least one park that will be putting in an ordinance for parking at some point soon, so CC Jackson and Park Heights will, and that particular park, um...
Because of the library.
In the library, so I, I do know that they are already designing and planning for that, and we've talked to them about the need to have an ordinance in order to facilitate that parking lot, so I imagine they will, at the very, if they can't have it permitted, at the very least, they would wanna keep it as is, because they will need a parking So, if we keep it by, conditional by ordinance, I think that's fine.
What we're both seeing, mine, mine just says it differently than yours does, so we just have to reconcile, too.
Yeah, no, that's...
The second, the second one is to the wireless communications piece.
Correct, and so, this is the one that we probably need...
Madam Chair, do you want us to split these up into two separate amendments?
Yeah, we need to see, we need to see it in writing exactly how it's gonna be, I think, before we, and, and make that happen before the next meeting.
Okay, we can reconcile these, but I'm gonna keep my idea of having the wireless communications as conditional by ordinance, so that the...
Okay, so we'll, so we'll have to review that, because...
Maybe we'll just do two separate amendments, so that the parks thing is separate from, I meant, the parking thing is separate from the communications. Would that be all right with you?
That's fine.
So, we're gonna hold the vote on these two because of what you just described, wanna divide it into two separate amendments.
Okay. And...
And just a reminder, as we're moving along, remember everything that we're voting on is, you know, it's citywide. Was that, was 34, item 34, did you talk about that?
We were, those were what we were just talking about, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna hold both of those.
Because I think, you know, some of us had, had amendments for the same cluster of things, and so we have to reconcile those.
Right.
Like Councilman Dorsey's amendment on the carriage houses.
Right.
Was similar to mine, so...
Okay.
Well, we voted yours approved and held yours, so we're...
Yeah. Madam Chair, is it possible to come back to the carriage house amendment?
I wanna move to 35, since we're kind of on that page.
Okay.
So, we voted that one through, basically with number 10 on this spreadsheet, that was the one where I said Jennifer combined them.
So, that, so that one, item 35 was already voted on.
I can't even keep track of what's what.
30, does that include, no, 36 is separate.
So, they're, they're all the same, so 36, 37, and 38, those are the table amendments.
All within that one.
Yes.
Okay, so those were done. Bike parking angles and dimensions, I see Ramos has an amendment and planning.
Yes.
Ours is the same amendment.
No.
That's right, I, I put in the chart for you, okay, gotcha.
Yes, so we would, for this one, we would take Councilwoman Ramos's amendment and not ours, she's replacing ours.
Okay.
So, what it does is it just changes the dimensions of, um...
We had a typo.
Right.
Okay.
So, it just take, changes the parking dimensions for bicycle parking, required bicycle parking.
So, I had hold 19 through 24 when we do all that, so I, anything that has to do with bike parking, I think we all need to do that together.
Okay.
As a package. So, I'd want, I think we should hold both of those till the 25th.
All right.
Are we ready for, what's that last one on there, sign regulations?
I thought you were...
And they were part of Costello's package.
Yes. Did you wanna talk about those, or I think you were holding all of Councilman Costello's?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, so we already voted on page four, conditional use, application referrals?
No, you wanted to hold...
Which page?
That was another hold.
Because of Torrance coming in.
Right, okay, I just wanna make a note here, and that was seven as well.
Oh, wait, maybe not, that's a different one.
No, we weren't, we were holding up to...
Item six and seven?
I know, six and seven were different, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, six, seven, eight, and nine, um...
Because...
You hadn't said any...
Because they're tech, they're like technical, aren't they, pretty much?
Let's see.
Okay.
This is the section about the...
Well, I'm, I'm gonna hold those. So, it looks like pretty much everything else is gonna deal with...
Did you, did you want us to go over that? Did you want me to walk through that, number six, or what had you decided?
You can talk, yes, you can talk about number six.
Sure, so this is on page 15 of the bill, lines 13 through 18.
What amendment number?
It's amendment six.
Amendment number six. Amendment number three, sorry.
She's just gonna discuss it right now.
Sure, so, and we're on page 15 of the bill in lines 13 through 18, so in the bill, we said to remove that entirety of the referral to BMZA for action, but we, in our amendment, we're proposing not to remove that as noted in the bill, but instead to modify the existing language that will remove the deletion and then replace the word zoning administrator in lines 14, 15, and 16 with executive director of BMZA, and so that is the, the only switch. And so, our thing is rather than do the wholesale deletion, it'd just be clarified that BMZA determines if the conditional use in signed application is complete.
So, any discussion on this? Remember, this is the, we're going, we're, we're not voting on this, we're holding it, because this is giving the executive director of the board, replacing those names, so we're kind of, the board agrees to hold that, correct? Okay, it looks like pretty much everything else we're, we have time to hold for some more work and dialogue?
Madam Chair. My amendments have all been discussed here with the planning department in past sessions, I'd like to move my amendments along.
Um, your amendments just, you're talking about the ones you just gave us today?
I mean, two of them have been in the committee's hands since March, and the third one was discussed at length in the last session here, and it is incredibly, incredibly simple and straightforward, it literally changes a zero to an eight.
What page was that on, again?
I have...
Oh, I'm looking on the chart.
It's, it's not on the chart.
Oh.
The first one's not on the chart, but...
I didn't get it till today.
That's what I'm saying, we're, I wanna...
The first one's on the chart, but the other two, I'm sorry, the first one's not on the chart, but, no, I'm sorry, the first two are on the chart, but the last one is not.
I want us to wait and vote on them all together, especially since we just got them today.
Can we at least knock out?
We have another session on the 25th, and we'll get through, hopefully, we'll get through all of these on the 25th. Any other questions from the committee? So, at this time, the work session is at recess.